We'll call the mid order officially at 5:04. Clark Sigrist, if you would please call the roll. By voice.
Anthony.
Present.
Foster.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Sigrist, present. Slavens.
Good evening.
Snyderman.
I am in attendance.
Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented without change?
So moved.
Thank you.
I roll call vote, please state aye if supportive.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster. Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Sigrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Call for motion approved, two sets of minutes from the June 18th and June 23rd, 2020 meetings.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call vote.
Sigrist, sorry, Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Sigrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Now is time in our agenda for any citizens non-agenda items or public comment. If you're on the line and would like to talk or speak to an item that is on our formal agenda, please reserve until that time. But if there's any general public comments that wish to be made, now would be the time to do that. And how you would do that would be to raise your hand. Michael, if correct, you want to take them through the instructions on how to make public comment? Or just simply raise your hands and then you'll give them the ability to speak, right?
Correct. Additionally, some will get to type into the chat box that they would like to speak. And I would then promote them to panelists and a little bit of them. They would do that, but then allow them the opportunity to speak. I see no public comments and none were submitted to my.
Okay, very good. Moving on in the agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Support. Thank you. Those in favor, by roll call vote.
Anthony. Anthony?
Aye.
Foster. I assume I didn't see, but you're muted.
I said aye.
Oh, okay. Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Sigrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Thank you, Treasurer Slavens. So now moving on to public hearing. We have a public hearing this evening for local government approval of a liquor license, application of the Tailgate Garage. Presenter would be Michael Sigrist. Would you like me to go ahead and go through the summary for you, Mike? So that way you can monitor what's happening elsewhere.
If you would like to do that, prior to that, I would ask, there is a typo in the executive summary.
Okay.
It indicate, you will hear the supervisor read shortly that the township currently has three available quota licenses. That is in fact, two available quota licenses. So there's a typo.
Okay, no problem.
Those is tied to the PDD amendment in Uptown. So, Mr. Supervisor, take it away.
Okay. Would you like to read the model resolution? Or we'll do that after the public hearing? Because we have to move first into the public hearing, technically. Let's see, I think we formally have to move into the, or I read, read the executive summary, then we'll do the resolution to go into the public hearing.
That sounds good to me.
Perfect. All right, the clerk's office has received the application for a new Class C liquor license from the Tailgate Garage located at 4333. 35 Michigan Avenue. This would be a quota license. Township currently has two available quota licenses. One is tied to the PDD Amendment Uptown, which is Cherry Hill Village. The Tailgate Garage plans to modify the family entertainer. Entertainment Center to add new activities, change the name from the Fun Garage, and offer the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages under a Class C liquor license. Myself, Luke Sigrist, and Treasurer Slavens met with JP Howe, representative of Fun Garage owner, Mr. Hyder Hassan, about their intention to opening a modified family entertainment center in Canton Township that provides alcohol service. Given the business plan lacking of existing business with the option in the area and the decor, the recommendation for the approvals being brought forward to the entire board this evening. That being said, we'll call for a motion to move into public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing at 5:09 PM to consider the request for a new Class C liquor license from the Tailgate Garage located at 4335 Michigan Avenue, Canton, Michigan, 48188.
Support.
Call for roll call vote to go into public hearing.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Sigrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Okay. Do we have with us this evening either Mr. Howe or Mr. Hassan? And would they like to make public comment at this time?
I have, I believe both. I will give both of them the ability to talk. Mr. Hassan, I have. And allowed to talk and I have JP Howe and they have raised their hand. So, both gentlemen are promoted to panelists. You have the ability, if you'd like to share your video with us. Also, you can unmute yourself and speak. I would recommend one at a time.
Okay. This is Hyder Hassan. And I would like to take this opportunity, first of all, good evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. And I would like to just say that we need to change our business model to be more inclusive. And that needs the alcohol license as we had applied for. So that we can do. Simultaneously become a place where adults, as well as children, can all be inclusive in that entertainment area. And that's, that's the reason behind the application for the liquor license.
Do you have a video that you could share with us this evening?
No, I don't. What kind of video are you looking for?
Just. I don't know, my clerk Sigrist had suggested there may be a video that kind of piqued my interest.
Oh, uh, we were trying to, but somehow it didn't materialize.
That's okay.
By the time we got our attraction, we got shut down, so.
No problem, no problem.
I can share my screen and we can go through the business plan if you, if they would like that.
Actually, I have that open if you would. Little technologically backwards.
I see Dennis Murphy has a PowerPoint.
Oh, actually, I have it open here. How do I share that?
So, I will have to give you. The ability to do that. Now, if you, are you on a laptop of some sort?
Yes.
Okay, so I have allowed all panelists to. Share their screen. I'm promoting you to a panelist. So now, if you would like, you can unmute yourself because you've been muted now because of that process. And then, so go down to the bottom and select share screen.
Yes, okay.
And then.
There we go.
Okay. Can you guys see those?
You may want to make that, hit the big box to make that.
Got it. Sorry about that. Okay. Okay, so basically, our vision is, previously, the Fun Garage vision was for ages from three to 15. But now we wanted to include everybody and that's why we started from beginning. We also went from, we had changed some attractions, we added. Or we were planning to do an axe throwing, a folding lanes, a knocker ball, and some archery tag, as well as a golf simulators. And I can, I have some pictures that we started doing and then had to. So the bar, this picture that we are showing, displaying is, was our most ambitious design project. We're gonna scale it back a little bit because some budget issues, but this is what. So we have already incorporated some of the design elements. We include, we have added about 15 television sets in all across the facility. The main, well, we only have one floor. And we have changed our menu to include brats, wings, nachos, burgers, dogs. Previously, where we only had like, simple things like chicken tenders and pizza and that's it. But now we're adding more stuff. Once we get the approval, we decided to get some Michigan craft beers and source everything locally, everything that's Michigan based. And some, these are some of our pictures that we were trying to do, the axe throwing lanes. Football bowling, we can't use folding because it's a trademarked thing. So we've decided to call it football bowling. This is a picture of our golf simulator. The only thing we don't have is the wooden. Enclosed screen, but everything else is what we got from the vendor. And instead of foresight, we have changed our vendor to OptiShot, which is a local Michigan-based company. This is what soccer, bubble soccer is. And basically, it's a bubble suit. You kind of put it on like a backpack with handles on top. And then you can play soccer with it or with little kids. They, and we have a big soccer ball about 18 inches in diameter. So you can see the ball while you're kicking it towards a goal. The other attractions that we want to do are, this is the archery tag. It's foam tipped arrows. Extremely, it's kind of like a marshmallow on top. It doesn't hurt. The bows are modified for, I believe, the string tension is only about like 60, 60 pounds. And that's not, I mean, it's extremely light. Even if you get hit by one, first of all, you have all the protective dog. You have a mask, you have the head cover. So it's, you can, and you have these protective barriers in between. In addition, we also planning to have some corn holes. And we have added some of the classical video games. We used to play when we were kids like Galaga, Pac-Man, Space Invaders, those kind of games. In addition, we're also gonna, we're gonna retain our VR arcade. And we're adding this, the new Fortnite or League of Champions esport arena. It's in the construction, we're looking into it. And then obviously, our tried and tested rope course. We call it kids rope course, but it's more like it can cater to both adults as well as kids. And. Then obviously, the other video games. This is our climbing pit, which has been replaced with the folding, the football bowling unit. So that's no longer in existence. And this is our spiel. We, the vision that we had was, previously was to have a kids from three to 16, which became three to 12 at the most. But now with all the expansion, the new attractions, and hopefully our liquor license, we should be able to cater from everywhere from like six to 60. We can also cater to corporate parties. And fundraisers all at the same time. We are not limited to having just kids parties, a school after hours, but with this. And we also changed our menu to increase, going from chicken tenders and pizza, we've added things like spicy broccoli, flowers. All kinds of different bar foods. And I'm drawing a blank right now. But anyway, so those are, we have changed our food items to have entirely different. Very demographics. And we have sliders instead of one burger. Sliders, buffalo chicken tenders, buffalo wings, and that kind of food. The concept, basically, restaurant with tailgate type food. Alcohol sales, multiple tailgate games, which is like corn holes. We're thinking about adding some other stuff like the golf tipping. And then in addition, we can have special events for golf simulators and esports and kid parties. We're gonna still keep doing those. However, with changing scenarios, we have changed our format a little bit. And lastly, the business strategies, we have done the research. That's to where, I mean, we looked at each and every competitor in the Canton area, Canton and Plymouth. And we figured out that. We need to be more like Dave and Buster's rather than Chuck E. Cheese's. People, when they go out, they want to eat as well as drink and have enjoyment food. I mean, they, they don't just want to come in, drop their kids off, and then they go out and sit in the car or just sit and do the work at the computer while the kids are having fun. So we needed to change. That was one of our reasons that we have decided to adopt some of the Dave and Buster's options, as well as retain our stuff with, so that we can still attract our base demographic that we've already made the customer base, which is basically three to 13 years old. But we still want to do those birthday parties. However, we want to include the parents and their guests also. Lastly, we also want to do a phase two of the concept. We have some land in the back that we want to do some sand volleyball, kickball, bocce ball, and that kind of stuff. And lastly, so we're looking at a multiple phases of the whole project. It's not just gonna be, we get the liquor license, we get our base demographics, but we want to include all our other stuff also. I mean, the land in our back that we were thinking about, we've phased three when everything's said and done in a year or two. We are also thinking about doing a sports dome. That, I mean, that can provide us as a sports area that we can do like sand volleyball and that kind of stuff also, all throughout the year. And. Basically, and then, so these are basically our business strategies. And a lot of it is hinging on us getting the approval for the liquor license today. And that's pretty much it. I'm open to any questions that you guys might have.
Very good. Before we go to board questions, Michael, do we have any public comment? From any, anybody from the public that would like to speak or make a comment or ask questions?
I see nothing.
Okay. Seeing none, let's then go into board comments or questions, please.
Do we want to maybe kick it off first, myself, you, or Diane? Because we met and had some discussions, the three of us, prior to bringing this before the board, or?
Sure, go ahead.
I wasn't prepared to go first, but.
Okay, that's, I'll go first.
I can, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, one of the, one of the issues that we had with, with making the decision, bringing it front of the board, was at the time, we were struggling in terms of completing the occupancy permit for the facility. And that made us a little bit uncomfortable to be considering, you know, adding a liquor license for an operation that hadn't had occupancy already approved. Since then, that has all been corrected or brought up to speed. But I would like to, to share with Mr. Hyder, Mr. Howe, if he's on the line with him, that once the liquor license has been approved, if the board does indeed approve it tonight, there will be another occupancy inspection and review as the facility gets completed. Mike, that's, that's the gist, right, of what you were thinking?
Sure. And well, there were some other issues as well. So yeah, the transition from the Fun Garage to the Tailgate Garage would require an additional, some additional paperwork through planning and building as well. Obviously, everything, all the modifications would need to be inspected, meet building code. But again, the name on the certificate of occupancy and the certificate of zoning compliance would need to be changed from the Fun Garage to the Tailgate Garage, which is going to be the new business. So, that was kind of just an administrative thing. We wanted to make sure was communicated. What we're discussing today is whether or not we want to give one of our two remaining quota licenses and our only quota license that's free of any restrictions. To, you know, if we wanted to, if we wanted to do that. I don't know if Diane had anything else to add.
Well, just the other, the other thought, the discussions that we had is, once the new census data is submitted to the state, what will in 2020 census, which I don't know if that'll be April of 2021, but some point spring of 2021, once the full incremental population is understood for Canton Township, we're guessing that we may receive an additional authorizations for seven more liquor licenses. And we're using up the last one that's available broader Canton, one still left Cherry Hill Village. And possibly next spring of having seven new available across the township.
That's an excellent summary. Kind of where we stand.
Diane, if I spoke to any of your speaking points, I apologize. Is there anything you would add?
Nope, nope, you brought up all the good points, so yeah. It's important.
Oh yeah, we, we. Had this outstanding liquor license. We had discussed kind of what maybe the best use would be for one. When Mr. Hassan came to us with a business proposal, we discussed it. We discussed kind of the use change and. The entertainment value to the township, especially for young professionals. We did talk about, in the past, I believe, single-family homes had been the driving force for new construction in Canton Township. And I think one thing that has changed recently is an increase in apartments as well. And so what that means is younger professionals that are looking for entertainment. So we kind of kicked that, that kind of concept around and, and saw that maybe there's a legitimate public need. And Mr. Hassan, I think, realized there was a business need or a business opportunity. And so I think those two things seem to have converged here, which is why the three of us were comfortable giving, like recommending to, to the remaining trustees that our last unrestricted liquor license approval would go to the Fun Garage for that purpose.
There, Steve, yes, please. Unmute yourself, Steve.
Um, is this the, a type of, the un, is this type of liquor license that if this facility closes in the future, that it stays in Canton and can be reallocated?
We've done conditional in the past.
That is not a restriction we have placed on this.
So if it closes, then we just lose it? Or it can go anywhere? I know there's different types, so.
So, I'm unaware of a type that would like stay. We asked to have a condition placed on a previous liquor license that they would not. Transfer the license or sell the license out, that it would revert back or be used to, I think, a facility inside of Canton Township. There's some question over whether or not that's legally enforceable. But it's something we did because it made the board feel more comfortable. It's not something we've put on, on this as a stipulation. So it would essentially be an asset we would be providing to the Fun Garage, or I'm sorry, to the Tailgate Garage. They would be able to sell it if they so choose, to continue to use it if they so choose. If they go out of business, they could transfer it out of Canton Township. These quota licenses, when they, if they go from active to an inactive state, I believe it is referred to, maybe the term of art, Mr. Howe could probably help me. I don't see that he's there, but I think that the term is that they go from a quota to an escrow license. They've kind of, no, they're no longer active. The, the, that would revert back to our, we would get it back as a quota license that we could then issue to a new, to a new facility. So.
Okay.
If an escrow license becomes inactive, our escrow license number will increase by one.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So otherwise, I think it's a good use. It seems like a good use of the license.
Can we go back to the screen where we can see all, everybody's face? Because I can only see through Diane, I don't see Anne Marie, and I know she generally has questions. I see Summer's got her hand raised. So can we unshare the screen and go back to all participants being seen? Like. There we go, perfect. Now I can see everybody again, alright. Summer?
Um, yeah, so, kind of piggybacking on Stephen's question, could we make the liquor license contingent on him getting the other approvals that you spoke about earlier, Michael?
The liquor license itself?
Yeah.
So this body can, we can do what we want. So choose to, to, to pass, you know, our resolution along those lines. We could, we could do that. Again. Yeah, we could, we could, I don't know what that would, what that would look like.
Just simply modify them all?
No, we couldn't because. Essentially, the process is, the issuing body is the, is the state of Michigan. We are. Granting our approval. The problem is, is I believe Mr. Hassan has talked about having the developments occur in phases over, I think, I don't, I don't know if it's over a period of years, but the implementation of the, the granting and the implementation of the liquor license occurs earlier than the final developments of his facilities. So. Once we kind of give approval, the state issues the license, at which point he is free to exercise. All, you know, he could sell, he could sell alcohol, he could sell liquor. Now, building would then pull the certificate of occupancy if there's not a non, if there's no compliance. And Jade would have a better understanding.
Wouldn't not be able to operate at all without all other.
Yeah.
Well, that kind of controls that for Summer.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great use for a liquor license. I've gone football bowling or folding several times. I've gone by Hamtramck to do it. I've gone axe throwing and I've done that in Ann Arbor. It's a ton of fun and I think it would be exciting to have a place like that in Canton. And I know that young professionals are always looking for more fun things to do. And typically, they leave Canton to do it. So I think it would be a great idea to keep them at home and in having fun here. So, I like it.
Thank you, Summer. Anne Marie, you had, I guess, Anne Marie?
Thanks, and we know Summer's a good shot, so I can't wait to see her axe throwing, how she does that. But I'm wondering, is Mr. Hassan, does he have another facility like this? And if he does, does it have a liquor license? Mr. JP Howe can answer that, or?
Can you hear me? Hi, this is Patrick Howe, counselor for the applicant. Good evening, everyone. This is Mr. Hassan's first liquor license and only facility of this nature.
Okay, I'm just, I know that there's gonna be a lot of children there. So there's gonna be, is it gonna be a demarcated point where liquor can't go past? And that it's only in one area, they're gonna make sure that they keep it away from the kids?
Yeah, few, few, few comments on the liquor commission process. The liquor commission, if, if, if the township board approves this license, we then start the process with the state. So this is really the beginning, not the end of the application process. And if the state approves the liquor license, that approval will state that all services of alcoholic beverages will be, have to be separated from any sporting activities. So while we'll be able to wander through the facility with alcoholic beverages, any playing fields or surfaces, you know, you'll have to have a, no alcohol signage and that type of thing. All the staff will also be trained in the responsible service of alcohol. And the state approval order, like every order, will indicate that if any local law or ordinance is not followed, the township can write or call the liquor commission and advise them of that. And they will then have a hearing to pull the liquor license. So their approval is contingent on compliance with all local laws and ordinances. So there's some, along with your own local process, there's some leverage there with the state to make sure that he's following what needs to be done. And will certainly comply with all permitting going forward as this business is modified for the proposed use.
Okay, and then all the alcohol stays in the building also? Right now?
Yes, we are not applying for an outdoor service permit. If we do add outdoor fields, that would be another application process, both at the state and local level.
Are you planning on having those tables outside to eat? Because I'm wondering that kind of expanded later time.
I believe that's the second phase. Heidi, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if Heidi's on. You know, I just want, I just want to say too, I, I do a lot of restaurant licensing work and since March, the industry has been decimated. There are canceled projects left and right. And in this liquor license would be a big deal for the viability of this business. So we think it's a great use. We think it's a family friendly business. And I think, you know, just the state of affairs with hospitality and restaurants and event centers. I, I think to save this business and to let it move into its next phase would be a great thing for the township. Because I think it's going to be a long time before we see some of the national brands and others come back to the state is based on what I'm seeing. So we, we appreciate your consideration. It's been great working with the township on this and I would appreciate your support tonight.
So if it goes out, if we do expand to the outside, do they have to come before this board again? So if they add tables in the back and.
Are you saying to add an SDM license for out, or an outdoor service license?
Right. Do they have to come before us again or how's that work?
Jay, can you address that? That's it. Once they go into phase two, which may not be till next year. What we had mentioned was potential for outdoor volleyball. I don't know if that's just a sand volleyball court period? Or if they'll also be doing service, serving out back.
So there's a, I mean, right now the LCC has lifted some of the restrictions in regards to allowing that within districts. And there's because of COVID-19. But if this wanted to be a permanent permission to allow them, that is all done through the state. They have inspectors that'll come out with whatever the applicant, when they supply an application to the state. Inspectors would review it. They would come out and actually inspect the site and approve that at the state level. There's not a lot of local approval on that, other than the building piece of it. And then what we've done with the business support provisions that we just approved a few weeks ago. Again, those are supposed to be very limited. Restrictions for this, this pandemic.
All right, thank you.
I have shared the floor plan with, everyone has an opportunity to see that. It looks as though. The bar and seating area is here, the seating and TVs is here. So it's kind of that. I don't know when the signage would be, but.
Can I? Oh boy, jumping.
Is that Hassan?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Oh, you can hear me. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. So the two questions that you guys were asking about the outdoor seating, right now we don't have any plans. As of today, we don't have any option, we don't have, we haven't applied for any permits. We have, what we have applied is for a temporary outdoor, maybe like two or three tables. But no outdoor seating where we can serve alcohol and that kind of stuff. We don't have any plans for anything like that. The phase two that we were talking about was just for, for a sports stuff. I mean, we couldn't have, we were going to convert our, that empty patch of land into a sand volleyball area. We were not planning to put any tables in that area. The kitchen, so if you look at it exactly where that the mouse is, the key, the parcel area, where it says parcel area grows. Yes. So that's where we were planning to add a sand volleyball area kind of thing. But not a full blown, like a patio with tables and serving and that kind of stuff. The, all the food items, we were still gonna, even with the phase two, we were still gonna utilize the interior. Inside star, inside the space where we have the table area. So that was it. There was no plans of anything outside. The only thing that we are doing, we're looking into it right now is temporarily with the COVID stuff. If we can have some kind of, some kind of permission where we can put. If you look on the left-hand side where the parking area is, where the red patches are on the left-hand side of the building. Towards Michigan Avenue, go up a little bit. I think, Michael, you're controlling the mouse.
I am.
Okay, so if you look at the left-hand side of the building. That parking area, the parking spaces, which we currently use for our employees. We might put a few tables there. If somebody is uncomfortable dining in and they can do the purchase, we'll make a carryout container and they can eat outside, sit in outside, eat over there. But we're not going to be, we were not, and I, I do not foresee any reason to have like a whole waitress or a serving option over there. Either right now, either.
Thank you. Is there any additional board comment or questions? I'm bouncing back and forth, see, looking for raised hands. I see none. Oh, there you go. Thanks, Mike. That makes easier. Okay, seeing none. Call for a motion now to close the public hearing. I'll move.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing at 5:40. I'll second that.
Call for roll call vote.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seer, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Now call for motion to approve the request for a new Class C liquor license for the, from the tailgate garage located at. 43335 Michigan Avenue, Canton, Michigan, 48188.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen.
We're not done. We made a motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the request for a new Class C liquor license from the tailgate garage located at 43335 Michigan Avenue, Canton, Michigan, 48188.
Who was the support?
Stephen.
Stephen.
Oh, very good. All right, roll call vote.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seer, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye. Congratulations, Mr. Hassan. Moving on to the next item on the agenda would be item G1. Consider approval hazard pay premium to eligible public safety personnel working during our pandemic.
Mr. Supervisor. I move to approve a $1,000 first responder hazard pay premium per eligible employee in accordance with Senate Bill 690, signed into law on July 1, 2020. And the resulting attached budget adjustment.
Board. On July 1st, 2020, the governor signed Bill 690, which authorized the state of Michigan to reimburse local municipalities on a first come, first served basis. For first responder hazard pay premium of $2,000 per eligible employee. Eligible employees include law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, 911 operators. We are requesting that the board approve the hazard pay premium eligible to the employees physically working, exposing themselves to hazardous conditions. Between March 15, 2020 to May 31, 2020. This will cost the township approximately $192,000, of which we seek to apply for reimbursement from the state. For the $1,000 per eligible employee immediately. Should the township apply and receive the reimbursement from the state of Michigan, township would absorb the applicable payroll taxes, which are approximately $14,000. We have Director Trumbull on the line with us if there are any questions that the board may have. On this topic, I see Anne Marie.
And thanks. I think this is a great, great idea. I know that, I mean, Canton's first responders, they've been on the front lines and providing support. And we even know that two of our own firemen, you know, suffered from the COVID-19. And their families have also been a part of this. So. You know, there are even sites out there to help family members through this when their loved ones come home who are dealing on the front line. So I think it's great we're able to do this, but I think we need to do more. So I'd like to see them to get time off in addition to this $1,000, an asset, you know, as a board, we consider that give at least a week.
Okay, are there any additional? Diane?
I'd just like to make a comment, kind of piggybacking on Anne Marie. I know when we went and spoke to police and fire during the COVID shutdown. We did hear a lot, not so much about wanting a bonus pay, but that they would want, that they really wanted some time with their family. So, you know, I, I heard that from both police and fire. And, and I know this was a very tough time for everybody, but especially our police and fire who were on the front lines every day.
And continue to be, absolutely.
Continue to be. You're right.
So. John?
We're going to apply for it. Is, is there a likelihood? Are we going to get reimbursement or not? Or we're in, in the mix?
I, I can be, it's on a first come, first served basis. Canton Township, because we are extremely well organized and kind of tend to be ahead of the game. We've already submitted the request, so we are probably, if not the first community in, one of the very first communities in with the request. So the likelihood of receiving it is, probability is very high. Stephen?
Well, I think it's great and I, I think it's well deserved and I'm glad we're able to do this. So I, I too would throw in my support in taking a look at what else we can do for our first responders. That did a great job in, in the March through June timeframe when we were at. Seeing, when we were facing an unprecedented pandemic. So I, I would like to see some other ideas come forward as to how we could. Give, give back to those that did sacrifice and their families. In addition, I don't know, you guys know better than the non-full-time electeds. Who else in our, in the township went above and beyond from other departments besides public safety? So if there's any, any people that you see that also deserve something for what we went through and, and how they performed. Not everybody was laid off. We had people that needed to be there. I, I'd be interested in hearing that and potentially giving them similar support. That's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none. Yeah, go ahead, Summer.
I guess I'll just add that I support everything that everyone else just said.
So the consensus is very clear. And so we've just given extreme clear direction to Chris. And Chad and Wendy and Kareen and the leadership team to, you know, go back, take a look and review and consider something on top of what's being considered here. Or maybe going even beyond the public safety area for those who during the shutdown. Did some pretty special things to keep us afloat and keep, to keep the boat afloat and going forward. So that, that assignment is forgiven, well received.
So I have a question. So hazard pay is hazard pay, and I would assume that that's kind of limited to individuals who are essentially placed in, in, in positions of hazard. I.e. individuals, first responders who are interacting with the public during a pandemic. Whereas. So would we want to provide $1,000 of additional compensation to individuals who were essentially, who, who, I mean, I, I don't know. Are we talking about individuals who never took leave, essentially people who worked the duration of COVID and never took time? And if that's the case, do we provide hazard pay, which I guess they were never really put in a position of hazard? Or do we provide some of time compensation for them? I know. There was an expansion of the federal Family Medical Leave Act. I think two weeks were allowed and I think most individuals throughout the township used that time. I imagine people who are here of the entire duration of that didn't, didn't use that time.
Right, right. That's true. So I think the, the assignment's very clear. Allow the leadership team to take it away and then come back to us with some suggestions. Based on all, all the, the, everything that's just been said here, whether it be financial, whether it be time-based and then, you know.
Or a mixture of both?
Yeah, or who wouldn't should be qualified. How would they qualify? And how do you make that delineation? Right? So it's a pretty significant request the board just made. Now we need to give the leadership team some time to go away, think about it and come back and then make a recommendation. I think that's fair.
Is there a timeline on when the, so we've already submitted an application for reimbursement of the hazard pay?
Under 690.
The hazard pay though. So how does that work?
That's, that's, that's in play. That's, we're moving forward. What the board is doing is approving us to, to actually do that.
So could we, we, well, we haven't voted yet to approve it. So my question is, do we amend the motion and, and provide one week or two weeks on refundable or, you know, non-expiring PTO back? Something along those lines.
So you're telling the leadership team exactly what you want to do? You want to give them the opportunity to think about it and the impact on the operation and the finances and come back and make a presentation? Or would you like to amend this motion? And then who would you qualify in that? I don't think we have. Oh, I don't, do we know who would qualify and how they would qualify? Cause I, for example, Diane, myself, we are here every day of the week, right? I don't expect any additional compensation whatsoever. I got paid like normal. We've got other employees who truly went beyond the call of duty and did things outside their job function. They should be acknowledged. I, I think we all agree with that.
We could amend the motion to include just who are submitting for the first responder pay through the state and then maybe take up additional as a separate agenda item later. That work.
And, and in here, yeah, very, you know, let's, within two weeks, come back to the board and say, here's, here's a, for everybody else, what do you think? Tonight, what we're doing is specifically what the governor has signed into law, 690. We're, we're taking advantage of that for the public safety because there's reimbursement for those funds. So beyond that will be another board action at a future board meeting, I think. Makes sense.
Why a thousand? Why not two?
Why not 5,000, Mike? I don't know. But let's take a look.
Well, we're a deliberative body. That's kind of why I'm proposing we deliberate. I mean, other communities go up to 7,000, I think. I'm not suggesting we do that, but what I am suggesting, I mean, it's nice that we're being, being reimbursed. $1,000 and we chose $1,000, I assume because it's 100% reimbursable.
Right.
But do, do we want to do $1,000? Do we want to do just money?
Right. What, what about Wendy? Where do we stand with that? What we could absorb? Do you know? I know you, I saw you raising your hand.
Yeah, I, I can't remember what I was raising my hand about at that point in time, at that specific point in time. But what I can share with you is that Kareen, Chris, Chad and I all sat down with the unions and discussed this hazard pay, the $1,000. And they're all very gracious for that. When we had that conversation, I'm sure they'd be gracious for more as well. We are going to be talking about kind of the financial projections as, as it goes with the CIP. So you'll see that. I mean, I didn't factor in paying an additional amount. It costs between both funds about $192,000. Per $1,000 that we offer for the public safety. So that's all I can really share with you at this point in time. I know as a leadership team, we've been talking about what we can do or what we can suggest to do for everybody. As far as recognizing some more people, but we haven't really come up with. A great solution yet because we're still trying to work through with limited staff. But I, I don't really have an answer specifically on, you know, can we absorb it? I'm sure we could absorb it. It's really a board decision. I, we are ready to go and hit the pay button. As soon as the board, if the board does approve it, we, we got the payroll ready to go. So we're going to pay this actually this week, tomorrow, if the board approves that, otherwise we'll, we'll just. Otherwise we'll, we'll just cancel the pay run if we have to. It'll have to be paid out at a later date because we won't, we won't have enough time to process, reprocess it for this week. If we do that, but that's okay too.
And Summer?
Um, so Diane mentioned that when she spoke to public safety folks during, um, when, at the height of the COVID, they mentioned they wanted additional time. Um, do we have any estimates? Um, and since this is just brought up, I assume that you may not have it, but on what additional time would cost?
You know, additional time as far as a cost, um, is really a matter of, you know, you really have to talk to Chris and Chad because that's really a matter of them trying to fill overtime and get enough bodies to have the minimum manpower required from the township's perspective. And everybody's been busy and, you know, I should really probably let, allow them to talk. But my understanding is, um, there hasn't been a lot of time to be able to take time off so that they have a big bank and to give them more time. It's, it, it's almost, I'm not sure if it's completely feasible for them to take off as much time as they have. But I should, I should defer to Chris and, Chris and Chad on that and how they can make their operations work with, with that.
Thank you.
I see, Chris, Chris, go ahead, please.
So I think that on the fire side during the peak of the pandemic, and, and by the way, we're, we're by no means out of this, right? So we have a long road to go ahead of us. Um, and so on the fire side, it was very difficult for me to say, yes, let's give them eighty hours of extra time or a hundred and twenty hours of extra time because I needed the firefighters here in order to serve the public. Um, moving forward, um, I mean, it's not out of the question for the fire side, but there are certain things in the contract that we have to look at where they can only roll over so much time and they can only have so much time. So when I start accumulating a lot of PTO time or a lot of time for them to take off, it creates a problem for me, um, for them to get all that time in because I can only have four firefighters off in a day. Otherwise I'm paying overtime and that's where that creates the, the bigger issue. So we can schedule four people off every single day, but the second that we have a, a person calling sick or something else happen where we're sending somebody to training, that's where our overtime costs begin to, becomes an unfunded, unfunded band-aid really for me. Um, that we have to pay this out. And I'm not against the firefighters getting that by any means. I know that they deserve it and they work hard and they're very appreciative of this thousand dollars to, to, to be honest with you. Um, and they're continuing to work and they, they do it without question. Um, but it's just some of those things that we really have to look at deep to know how much a hundred and twenty hours or eighty hours or whatever it is that we, we decide, um, affects the organization in the long run. And this could be over two to three years, um, that it could affect the organization in overtime. So a lot to look at when we're talking about, um, giving time to the firefighters.
But Chad?
You know, from a police perspective, it's very similar to the fire, except, you know, to move forward, it'd be important for us because of our staffing levels that if there was an offering of time, let's say it's eighty hours, to make certain that it's non-expiring. That way we'd have proper sta- staffing to ensure our service levels would continue. If we had to make a decision today, that, that'd be my only input is to ensure that it's not expiring. Um, this probably wouldn't hurt to go back, have the conversation and come back to the board, maybe with a proposal, but that's a board decision, of course. And I know our, our folks would be, are very happy, um, and they'd probably be even more happy with eighty hours or whatever you, you, you choose. But, uh, for certain, uh, it'd have to be non-expiring to not impact operations and our service levels to the community.
Question, if I may, for Wendy. Is it possible for an employee to sell their time back to the township? And would that be a, a potential financial obligation we would have if we were to give time to people?
Though current, currently they can purchase, depending on the contract, I think between eighty and a hundred hours. Fire might be a hundred and twenty, maybe it's eighty. Um, somewhere between eighty and a hundred and twenty hours each year, um, of PTO time that's unused. Um, and when they retire or terminate at the end of their career, if they leave, um, they get to cash all that out as well. Not all banks. Um, they're allowed to cash out, so it would have to be something that's written into the agreement. Is, is this something they have to use? It's non-expiring, but you also have to use it. We're not going to pay it out. We could say it's not subject to the final average compensation, which could boost up their pension, their final pension. If they waited, if they held this to the end of their career and said, all right, I've got this eighty hours and I'm going to save this and just cash it out. So now my salary's, you know, two thousand dollars higher and now my pension's going to be based off of that. So there's a lot of things to consider, um, when allowing unexpiring time off or, um, you know, would we allow them to cash it out? Or how, how do we, how do we work that? Did that answer your question, Michael?
Did, thank you.
You're saying it'd be easier to give cash than to give time, basically. That's what it sounded like to me.
I, I'm, I don't know how, how easy it is. I'm not saying, suggesting anything as far as their operations go. I'm suggesting that if we're, if we're going to allow it, um, to, to never expire and someone retires, we have to make some decisions now, which probably has to be discussed with the unions about whether they're allowed to cash it out or not cash it out and that, that's probably a little bit. And talking to Chris and Chad about if that works as well for them, for their departments. It, it, you know, it's obviously, it's absolutely a board decision. Um, and we'll make it work whatever the board wants, but I think it's easier from our perspective if we can kind of work some of these things out and make a recommendation to the board. But we'll do whatever you guys want, absolutely.
Yeah. If I may, I'll, I'll just, you know, I met with the supervisor and the treasurer, um, with public safety. Both, both groups we're talking about here. Um, and this was at the, at the height, you know, of, of our COVID cases and, um, some additional uncertainty going on inside the organization. Um, what I heard at that, at that meeting was that, that, um, especially they wanted some time. Um, and you know, there was some comparisons to other departments and, and, and other municipalities. There was discussion about staffing levels, ticket levels, um, the service demands on the community. And I won't get into all that was discussed, but what I walked away from that meeting from was, okay, these guys want some time. And I'm one of seven who get to make the determination whether or not, you know, whatever we, we're going to do. Um, and I don't run the police department, I don't run the fire department. But having heard what I heard, I said, you know, I think we need to give these people some time. And I thought I had kind of made that clear and that's okay. If that was disregarded or, you know, I don't, like I said, I'm one of seven, I don't get to have my way. Um, but I wouldn't be inclined to vote for the thousand dollars tonight. Um, without settling the issue of whether or not we're also going to provide some time to these individuals, you know, they're, we relied pretty heavily on them to protect us during this time period, to keep us safe during this time period. They were the only individuals working for the township who had to come into contact with the general public on a regular basis in dangerous situations. Some of these individuals were talking about that their significant other did not feel comfortable with them sleeping in bed with them. And they had spent upwards of a month sleeping in a separate room from their spouse because they did not want to bring the infection into their house. Um, there's some psychological things, uh, that kind of come along with this. There's the, the perceived health issues, there's the actual health risk as well. All things I will never truly understand. I was the sole employee in the clerk's office working. And I worked hard. I don't need time because believe it or not, um, as a non-classified employee, like a supervisor and like the treasurer, we don't get paid for hours worked. Um, and part of that is because I never stopped being the clerk, Diane never stops being the treasurer and Pat never stops being the supervisor. We are, our position twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, and it's implied that we will work to some degree that entire time. So we don't get vacation pay, we don't get overtime, we don't earn all of those kind of benefits other people do. And I'm not suggesting we should. Um, but relates to public safety, you know, I, I appreciate that we've kind of got it set up for the check run and I don't want to miss that. So I'm comfortable with giving him a thousand bucks. Um, my preference would be that we provide time as well tonight and authorize the administrative team to iron out the specific details. I do agree, I wouldn't want to hurt public safeties, like how they. Yeah. So luckily time is approved, right? My, my staff can't take time off unless I approve it. And I assume if it's a separate set aside bank that doesn't expire, they could take it next year, the year after that. Or as the finance director indicated, they could add it at the end of their service here at Canton Township and get a little bit of an extra windfall if that's what they choose to do with that time. Uh, but if it's a set aside time, a bank that doesn't expire, that can't be granted without the approval of the proper channels, it shouldn't impact the day-to-day operations and, and result in excessive overtime. It's, you know, financially we'd have to pay for it. I would argue it's worth it because of what they did for us at a time when most of us were, when we were all confined to our homes with the exception of essential. That's just my two cents as one of seven, you know, of the, of the people who are going to be making this decision. But I, I don't want to approve the thousand dollars today and say, okay, we'll come back to us in, in a week or two weeks or a month or two months with a separate plan.
You're saying we just modify the motion then, I'm sorry, for the thousand dollars? And then we say with a stipulation of adding time, details will be worked out, but we're voting on extra time, is that what you mean?
Well, from parliamentary procedure standpoint, because I'm, I'm, what I would want to do is make a, make an amendment to the motion. Have that voted. If that passes, then we would vote the motion in its entirety with the initial motion and the amendment on top of it. There'll be two separate votes, one for the motion or one for the amendment and then one for the total motion. That's, and I could, I could do that, but I, I don't want to do that if I'm the one of seven on an island.
Well, it's just the, the only concern I have, Mike, is I got no problem with taking another look in terms of time and making sure, well, whatever we do with time, it doesn't impact operations of, of safety. But there was also thoughts expressed, but there were other employees in the township who also went beyond the call of duty outside public safety.
Yeah.
And then defining who that is and how, how they would be included. That's a whole nother level of discussion that it's going to take more time, I think.
Right, but we had this discussion a month ago.
Yeah.
So here we are today and the entire discussion that we had may not have, you know, didn't even need to have happened a month ago. I mean, we had time between then and today to have ironed out a lot of these details and we, we didn't do that.
No, we haven't. Diane, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this is about hazard pay. This is about our, um, uniformed officers, police and fire. And so I think right now that's who we're talking about. Certainly we can come back and talk about other employees because I know I have one of them who was here more than ten hours a day, five days a week. So I agree with Michael and what everybody else has been saying about giving it unex- uh, unexpired time as well and letting, uh, the directors, um, maybe iron it out a little bit because we certainly want to make sure that, you know, you approve the time before they take it off. We don't want anybody, um, having to work overtime. Um, so I, I would like to add, um, additional time for our police and fire, unexpired time for them. And then, um, the directors can come back with, you know, the details, the ironing out on it. Because it is what I heard, you know, from them. We were home safe and they were, you know, just like the hospital workers. They were coming home and, you know, having to undress in the garage and not get close to their families. Um, so I think they deserve time.
Yeah, we had two that did get sick. A lot out of them.
Okay, so, uh, Steve, do you have any additional? No? Summer? John?
Steve, you started this.
I did not start this.
You did so, you started it. With the thought, uh, with the thought that, uh, maybe we should look at, uh, other employees in the township other than public safety.
Oh, that, that piece of it, yeah.
Yeah, remember that?
Yeah.
Back when, before Mike took over.
Okay, so, I'm sorry.
What, so, well, is there any, there's, there any motion or anything in, on the, on the table now? We're just gonna, we've got, we're, we're voting on, uh, the, uh, for the public safety and we're going to get reimbursed from the, uh, state with that. Other than that, we're just going to study, look at maybe other employees who worked during the, uh, pandemic that maybe there's some compensation that might be available for them. We're going to take a look, Wendy's going to take a look, see how that's going to impact the budget. But we're not going to make any decisions tonight to give any additional money to anybody other than voting on the public safety. Is that correct?
I think what, I think what's being said by Michael, Diane and Anne Marie is that they want to vote to add, um, not just the one thousand dollars for public safety employees, but to add that they, the public safety employees should receive some amount of paid time off. And, and that will be studied, um, but to include it in tonight's motion is what I heard.
Right, amend the motion. So the, who would like to amend that motion, Anne Marie, Michael?
Sure, let me see, where is it?
Much tonight.
So I read the amount of motion and I add to it.
So you can.
I think Michael had a question or he was saying something.
I just don't know, well, if Anne Marie wants to make an amendment, that's fine. I didn't have a clue what the, like, well, how much time people want. F-C-R-A was two weeks. They didn't get to participate in that, to be exempted them, right? The board voted to exempt them from that. So would it be appropriate to give them the two weeks?
Wendy, is that an accurate statement that, that we exempted public safety from F-C-R-A?
Yeah, they were exempted like in March or at the end of March when, um, the board had the ability to exempt public safety from that, they, they were exempted.
Okay, so the motion of that.
If they were, they were different, um, they're, if they were exposed, so the F-F-C-R-A, the, um, the ruling on that was that we were required to give everybody two weeks off due to a closure or due to, um, needing to be quarantined, like doctors ordered quarantine or whatnot. So, so during our closure, we basically paid everybody for two weeks of that, um, F-F-C-R-A pay that was required to during that closure. So now if any of our employees get sick, it's their own PTO time. We are, they are exhausted that, the majority of the employees are already exhausted that, the ones who weren't here. Public safety, um, there are different clauses that went into effect. So if they, um, have positive results, they are not required to use their PTO. Um, they just didn't have that time as if we are closed. They still get that time off. Um, and there was, Chris and Chad can probably speak a little bit more to that, but there were specific criteria that if they needed to be quarantined, it was not going to come out of their PTO time.
But just, just like, uh, House Bill six ninety, Senate Bill, whatever, six ninety, F-C-C-R-A was also reimbursed dollars, just like the six ninety bill. Those are reimbursed dollars to the community.
The, F-F-C-R-A are not reimbursed dollars.
Okay, thank you, that's an important clarification.
No, we, um, the only thing that we got out of that was not having to pay our, our portion of the FICA taxes on, on any time used for that.
So I, I think, Michael, I think we're set here to make the amendment based on the conversation to allow for two weeks of unexpirable PTO to be added to every public safety member. And then not part of the motion, but a directive to the leadership team is go away, take a look at the rest of the organization and come back and make a recommendation. Yes?
That sounds like a fantastic summary of what my gut is telling me.
All right, I see, uh, Chris, please.
So when you, when you talk about just putting a, a general two-week thing, this is some of the conversations the leadership team had. Um, so two weeks for police officers ends up being, I think, what, eighty-four hours, correct? Um, two weeks for firefighters ends up being a hundred and forty-four hours. So some of those details, I think that, you know, if we make a motion here tonight, those things still have to be worked out. If you're just saying two weeks in general, um, it's going to be different for police and fire. If I'm not wrong, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Wendy.
Yeah, so, um, two weeks of fire time, if you're trying to give them off. Yeah, so, um, two weeks of fire time, if you're trying to give them off to, yeah, the fireworks between nine and ten days or nine to eleven days a month roughly. So if you're giving them two weeks off, are you giving them, you know?
Call it an eighty hour equivalent.
Weeks, are you giving them, you know, the four days off, which would kind of equillate to two weeks?
So that's where.
They were twenty-four hour shifts.
Call it maybe our equivalent.
Eighty hour equivalent, I'm comfortable. I, so, I, I think we can word the amendment in a way that would be something along the lines of, I amend the motion to provide for the creation of a time bank equivalent to the F F C R A time bank and for details to be negotiated between the administration and the respective collective bargaining units. That gives you all the time to hammer out those details. We've given you the raw, broad guidelines. That, would that, and for it to be non-expiring, would that be something?
That sounds like a motion.
Could work with.
Second.
Wendy.
Okay, Pat, so there's been, so I made the amendment.
You made the amendment.
Seconded by John.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we have to include the first thousand to our original.
This is an amendment, Anne Marie, so that's already included.
So from a process standpoint, there will be a vote on the amendment. If it passes, we vote the entire thing. If it fails, we just vote the original motion. That's the process. Mr., so do you want to call for a roll call?
For a roll call to approve the motion for the amendment.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Okay, so you want me to read the main motion?
Uh, yes, please.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following amendment. The following motion is amended, um, a one thousand dollar first responder hazard pay premium per eligible employee in accordance with Senate Bill number six nine zero signed into law on July one, twenty twenty, and the resulting attached budget amendments as well as the amendment to provide for a, um, non-expiring time bank equivalent to the F F C R A. And details to be negotiated between the township administration and the respective collecting, collective bargaining units.
Support.
Roll call vote?
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Direction is extremely clear. Wendy, you were Kristen and, uh, Corinne and company, Chad and Chris and unravel that, that ball of yarn we just created.
I'll get a hold of, uh, Corinne in the morning.
All right, thank you. Item G two, uh, request approval of email office three sixty-five service renewal.
Supervisor, I move to approve the renewal of office three sixty-five email systems licensing with the township's office three sixty-five email installation in amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Support.
Okay, township's Microsoft email system and services and hosts with Microsoft three sixty-five township must annually renew its license with Microsoft. They do not offer multi-year agreements for customers our size. Township's current prepaid online expires July thirty-first. Renewal of this service is critical to provide uninterrupted access township email services. Is there any board discussion or questions for Director Trump? Saying none, uh, call for roll call vote?
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster? Summer?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens?
Sorry, aye.
Uh, you're, it's okay. Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And, and Mike, I should probably slow down a tiny bit. I don't know if we've got participants that were raising their hands during, uh, the item G two or three there.
I see no hands raised.
Yeah, that makes it a little bit simpler for us. All right, moving on to item G three, consider final approval Fillmore Place Plan Development District and approval of site plan for Fillmore Place.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, approval of the final plan development district and site plan for Fillmore Place. Whereas the project sponsor has requested final approval of a planned development district for Fillmore Place and site plan approval for Fillmore Place on property located on the west side of Beck Road between Michigan Avenue and Gettys Road. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the final planned development, plan, planned development agreement and site plan and voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the requests as they meet the criteria for a planned development result in definite benefits to the community and comply with the applicable site design requirements of those only ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees of the charter township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the Fillmore Place final, develop, final planned development district and approve the site plan for Fillmore Place on tax parcel number listed as proposed in the planned development agreement and plan documents. Subject to the applicant executing and recording the planned development agreement and reciprocal access easement agreement and subject to all applicable state and local development regulations.
Or? Hey, in summary, the applicant proposes to locate five hundred and four apartment units on approximately ninety-seven point three acres located on the west side of Beck Road between Michigan Avenue and Gettys. Project density of five point one eight residential units per acre is less than the maximum density of eight units per acre recommended by the comprehensive plan and allowed under our six zoning. Two entrances are proposed along Beck and the secondary access is proposed in the southwest part of the site for a future connection to Woodbridge Estates to the west. Each planned development district is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community. The project sponsor proposes to the following definite benefits. One, maintaining thirty-three percent of the site, almost thirty-three acres as open space, which exceeds the twenty-five percent open space minimum. And it includes a woodlands area, uh, in the north part of the site, providing trails and active recreation throughout the open spaces. Reforesteding two acres of the open space in the southeast part of the site adjacent to Beck, connecting the proposed sidewalk along Beck to the current sidewalk termination, the south of the science drain and making traffic signal improvements noted in the traffic impact assessment. Other site amenities include clubhouse, pool, playground, dog park, community garden and gazebos. Uh, the preliminary approval of the planned development was granted by the township board and trustees on January fourteenth, twenty twenty is now back before us. Are there any board questions of Director Smith? Jade is with us this evening. Go ahead, Stephen.
Um, so we've seen this a couple of times. I was just wondering if anything has changed since the last time that we saw it, like, you know, or that Jeff or Mr. Spizzen?
No, there has not been. Um, and I do have, I know you like pretty pictures. I do have some of the elevation.
All right.
I'm going to share my screen.
On my day.
Okay.
Jade, you're all set to share your screen. I also have promoted, uh, Jeff Blay and, uh, Mr. Spizzen to panelists if you need any backup.
Let's see, sorry about that. I got too many things open. So there you can see, those are just some of, this is the location that we're referring to, just north of Michigan Avenue, um, and Beck Road. And then these are just some of the elevations of what's being proposed for the site.
And I remember there was, uh, a, a good tree area that is being preserved and that's still being preserved.
Yes, and I think that in re, in regards to that too, there's also the reforesteding two acres of open space, um, within the, the development itself as well.
Great. Thank you.
It's hard to know which way to wave.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
So, yeah, this passed through quickly as in the planning commission, because we were, we had seen before. But one of the items is, um, some of the parks, you know, it's everything that will be on those grounds are private. And the developer did say there wouldn't be any fences, so it's not like people couldn't walk on it and either use the trails or something like that to get to access to some of the sidewalks. So that's just one concern I have in terms of that we still look at the surrounding areas where we start. There's neighborhoods there that they have access to parks. So this will be private.
Any additional comments? Let's see, I can't see Summer, so let me change my view.
Okay.
There you go. Any comments or questions?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, seeing no additional comments or questions, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Item G four, consider approval of special land use for a group childcare home, uh, village daycare.
I'm going to leave Mr. Blay up. I'm going to remove Mr. Spizzen as a panelist and Jade, you're still going to have the ability to share your screen.
Hey, thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Supervisor, I move the board approve the following resolution, is approval of a special land use for a group childcare home, village daycare. We're at the project sponsor, Lori Saul, has requested, uh, special land use approval for a group childcare home at four three four six three Lipka Court, located in the Brentwood Estates subdivision. And whereas the planning commission reviewed the request and applicable criteria and voted eight to zero to recommend approval subject to the applicant meeting all of the requirements of M C L one two five point three two zero six and that's the special land use for the group childcare home is only valid for as long as the applicant maintains ownership of the property or the child in a group childcare home license at the property. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees of the charter township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the request for a group daycare home for village daycare at four three four six three Lipka Court on tax parcel number listed subject to meeting all the requirements of Michigan compiled laws and that the special land use for the group childcare home is only valid for as long as the applicant maintains ownership of the property and the group childcare home license at the property.
Support.
The applicant proposes to conduct a childcare home in the personal residence at forty-three four sixty-three Lipka Court. Mrs. Saul presently has a license for a family childcare home, which allows up to six children, which is the permitted use. Any childcare use for more than six children is special land use. The group childcare home license in the state of Michigan allows for up to twelve children. Special land use, use criteria for group childcare homes are established in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, M C L one twenty-five thirty-two oh six. Do we have any questions for Director Smith? Any questions for Jade?
Just one, was there any neighborhood comment at the planning commission, Anne Marie?
There, um, there weren't and, but actually Jeff did, um, say that there weren't. I guess they did ask around and the woman did ask and there were no complaints. She's had a daycare center there already. And what this basically is, is what's happened is she already has the siblings of the additional children she wants. So the parents are saying, instead of us having to drop our kids off here and go to another daycare center to drop off the others, can we just add our siblings here? And that was basically the request. So it's not like she's bringing a whole bunch of new people. But there've been no, um, issues with her doing this. None of the neighbors complained and they were okay with it. That was one thing we did ask her.
And the applicant before us, I have promoted to be able to speak if there are any direct questions for her.
Thank you.
Again, Summer, I cannot see you, so I don't know if you have any questions.
I'm good. I'm good.
Steve, you good?
I guess just one other comment about this that was brought up by the planning commission was the parking. Um, I know that comes up a lot, but in regards to this, it was stated that the applicant is looking at just increasing her daycare for the siblings, so they would be the same number of cars and they pick up at various times. So there would not be a stack of cars in the residential area.
Correct.
I guess the only thing I would add is I actually know your house because I ride by it and see you and your kids at your swimming pool. I think you back, you back up, you back up to the park. I forget which park it is.
Uh, Floatin' Park.
Floatin' Park, yep. So I'll wave next time.
Wave at us, honk at us, we'll wave back.
Okay, those, and, uh, can we do a roll call, go and vote in favor of the motion?
Uh, yes. Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
William?
Aye. Moving on, item G five, consider approval of amendment for the final plan development for Wellington on the Willow.
Thank you very much, everybody.
You're welcome.
All right, sorry about that, Mr. Supervisor, let me get there. Trying to change permissions and becomes technical. And then the PDF crashes. One moment.
Item G five.
G five.
Consider approval of amendment.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, um, I move that the board adopt the following resolution, approval of amendment number one to the Wellington on the Willow planned development. Whereas the project sponsor has requested approval of amendment to the planned development for Wellington on the Willow located on the side of Lots Road between Ford and Cherry Hill Roads. And whereas the plan can, the commission reviewed, uh, planning commission reviewed the amended conceptual plan and development agreement and voted eight to zero to recommend approval of the request as it meets the criteria for a planned development is consistent with a statement of conditions of the conditional rezoning agreement and results in definite benefits to the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the board of trustees of the charter township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve amendment number one to the Wellington on the Willow planned development on tax parcels listed as provided in the planned development agreement and plan documents subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
Or? The conditional rezoning was approved by the township board in November twenty sixteen. That changed the zoning from L I, light industrial to R six, single family attached residential and removed the land area from the corporate park overlay. The statement of the conditions include conceptual plan for maximum two hundred and eighty-two attached residential units on the forty acres included in the project. Less than the maximum density permitted by the comprehensive plan that allowed for our six zoning. The offer of conditions also required approval of P D D and restricts future development by prohibiting many uses that could otherwise be considered our sixth district. Final P D D was approved by the township board October twenty-third, twenty eighteen. The proposed P D D amendment reduces the total number of units from two hundred and eighty-two down to two hundred and sixty-eight. It eliminates the four-story buildings and modifies the architectural design of the buildings. The project is also now proposed as condominiums instead of rental apartments. The proposed P D D conceptual plan again includes two hundred and sixty-eight units with, uh, within two distinct attached residential building types, townhouses and stacked flats, which are contemporary design. Over sixty-eight percent of the site will be preserved in an open space. Most of the wooded area in the southern portion will be placed into conservation easement. Clubhouse facility, pool, walking trails are also amenities approved within the community. All the existing natural wooded areas will be preserved via conservation easement with the state of Michigan. Due to the nature of the project, they will be utilizing private roads thus have chosen not to connect or extend public road serving the single family, uh, development in the city of Westland. Jade's with us, has any, if the board has any questions or comments? There's an aerial view.
And I promoted Mr. Stolman to a panelist as well.
We have a representative on the line with us if anybody has any questions or comments. I don't see any so far. Let me scroll down. Yeah, I got all the trustees, I can see. Wait, see, no questions or comments because we've seen this a couple of times before. Call for a roll call vote to approve the, uh.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
It was a single motion, correct? So we'll move on to item G seven, consider granting a waiver of payment of the contract.
I think you missed G six.
G six, did I jump too far? Yes, I did.
Oh.
Thank you. Consider expenditure of the, to the partnerships with the Arch Vanity for Stormwater Pond and Driveway Approach.
Mr. Supervisor, this is in, um, I'm going to merge these into one motion if, um, Mr. Supervisor, this is in, I'm gonna merge these into one motion if that's alright with, you wrote this RBA, if you're okay with that?
Absolutely okay with that.
And the budget amendment? Alright, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the township's contribution toward the Stormwater Pond and Driveway Approach at the Village Arts Factory and authorize the payment along with the following, oh, the attached budget adjustments, amendments.
The board? On March 11th, 2020, during the facility partnership for the arts made three formal requests to the township. A, request to complete parking lot, to complete the parking lot in the one acre parcel the township owns, and request the township provide reimbursement for a portion of the Stormwater Pond that would service the future parking lot and request the township provide a portion of the cost for the western entrance to the Village Arts Factory that would also be used to access our lot. Township's engineer Bill Surcheck has received the documentation, the general contractor analyzed what has been submitted. The information was received and following comments for the three areas being requested for township funding. First up, parking lot. Currently, the Partnership for the Arts operating two buildings, the western building, the warehouse and the dormitory, or the creamer, creamery. They have access to parking lot of 46 spaces, public parking lot, the north side of Cherry Hill. Near the western road is 39 spaces for a total of 85. We anticipate that an additional 30, 50 spaces could be provided on the one acre parcel. Currently, the township has budgeted 300,000 for the construction of the parking lot, although these funds have been budgeted over the past few years, the township has not, has determined, has not determined the need for the parking lot or approved design, construction for this project at this time. So unclear what the current or future needs are for the entire facility as the parking calculations using the original site do not correlate with the current use of the two occupied buildings. In addition, COVID-19 pandemic has township analyzing the budget projections and may reconsider paving the lot altogether. It does not mean that it can't be used as a lot. Stormwater Pond, the Stormwater Pond constructed at Village Arts Factory drains a total area of 3.78 acres and the design includes future drainage in the one acre township parcel. Based on this information, percentage of the pond used by the parcel is 1 divided by 3.78 or 26.4%. General cost for the pond construction based on the review of these costs, the pond excavation cost is 213,383, therefore 26% of that would be the 56,000 identified in the board package. The western driveway approach, Village Arts contractor provided a cost of 172,000 for the western driveway approach on Cherry Hill. The request for partnership for the arts is for Canton Township to reimburse 50% of this amount of 86,000 and some change. The township is requesting recommending that the 50% pro rata share be used in this instance. Summary, the above information is provided in order for you to consider the request for the PFA and review Township's engineering department. I have included total exposure of expenses that are either being requested included in the township CIP or additional costs to compete, complete the portion of the overall project. And that all has been part of the details of parking lot 300,000, Stormwater Pond 56, driveway approach 86, pathway completion 48,000, and I've rounded those values. And that is conclusion of the summary. Are there any questions that the board may have of either Jade or myself? Go ahead, Emery first.
Hi, yeah, just for clarification, and so we budgeted 300,000, but we're only spending 142,571, correct?
Right.
And does that mean that we are, they're going to be coming back for more, or this is basically what we're saying, we're gonna spend at that site?
Yeah, Jade, Jade?
Yes, so in the CIP and what's in the budget is 300,000. The ask of the Arts Factory is for the additional 142,572, keeping the 300,000 in the CIP for the completion of the parking lot. We're in above that.
So this is above the 300,000?
Correct.
And also, what we've been doing the last couple of years is kinda, do we need it today? Is the demand there today? You know, Cherry Hill Village continues to grow, there's more demand coming to the village as more commercial come, so there is gonna be parking required. That's always been a shortfall in Cherry Hill Village. So, you know, today that could be parked on as being grass or gravel, right, without being fully cemented out or asphalt out, so the urgency is not there for us, but it is there for the Arts Factory project.
When is the parking lot supposed to be completed then? What is the timing?
At this point, that'll be up to some, that'll be a future board decision.
But, and it will, yes, it is a future board decision, but it'll also be part of the CIP conversation that we're gonna have at the end of this meeting because it is part of, and Wendy, when we get there, I'll have to look it up, but I believe that it's actually a 2020 or 2021 expense. And I have to verify that.
And the, the plan, if I may, since I, piggybacking, the plan is to keep that into the CIP. I know I don't wanna steal a thunder from later on, but we are intending to be keeping the 300,000.
Yeah, and that was, that was the intent and the way that the RBA was presented is just to kind of put that placeholder out there that, yes, there is 300,000 being held for the CIP for the parking lot or in the CIP for the parking lot. And then there's an additional 142,572 being requested for our portion of the Stormwater Pond and then for the driveway approach that would lead to our property.
It is in the 2020 CIP plan, the parking lot.
2020.
Which I, I will tell you right now, that's not going to happen. And there's no way that we could actually get design and engineering and actually get a bit out and get it back and completed by the end of the year, so it will automatically go into a 2021.
Again, part of the discussion that we're gonna get into with Wendy, so we don't wanna go too, too deep on the CIP is there's a lot of funds that were projected to be spent in 2020 that because of COVID, it's not gonna happen. So everyone's gonna kind of push out another year in her presentation, unless she's already shifted those for us, I'd probably not. Emery, did you have a hand? Oh?
No, sorry.
Say no?
I thought you said yes.
Oh, sorry, no, I was putting my glasses on.
I don't see Steve again. Steve?
I'm back.
Okay, wonderful. Steve, any comments or questions?
No, no, not for me, thanks.
That being said, call, roll call vote.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Didn't hear you, Summer.
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seager's aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Item G seven, consider granting a waiver of the payment of contractor's fees for the month of March, April and May 2020 from Simple Recycling due to COVID.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the request for a waiver of the contractor's fee owed by Simple Recycling for the months of March, April and May of 2020.
He was in just under the wire before Diane. Background, in 2016, we entered an agreement with Great Lakes Recycling, also known as Simple Recycling for the collection of certain soft recyclables. The consideration paid to the township for the agreement was one cent per pound for the materials collected. In 2019, the entire calendar year, we received $644 from Simple Recycling. Simple Recycling is requesting waiver of the contractor's fees for the months of March, April, May. Due to the pandemic, in March, they collected 4,3034 pounds of materials, after which collections were halted due to the pandemic. In total, Simply Recycling would owe Canton Township $43 at this time. I have no objection to waiving this fee and I'm asking the board to consider it now as a formal action. Yes, Michael?
No, I think it makes sense. I, I think a lot of the people who we are relationships, business relationships with over there are probably in a difficult spot right now, so I have no issue with this as well.
Okay. So no other comments or questions, call, roll call vote for the action.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seager's aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Item GA, consider sale of Canton property and authorize myself to sign all the documents necessary to close the sale.
Mr. Supervisor, I moved that Canton accept the letter of intent from Sheila Stanley and authorize yourself, Supervisor Williams, to sign the formal purchase agreement and any other necessary documents necessary to complete the sale of the parcels located east of Willard Street and to the west of the ITC corridor.
Support.
We've seen this through other neighbors of hers have acquired those lots behind. She's, she's paying the same price as the others have paid. She was a little proactive in terms of sending us the purchase agreement and the, and a certified check, which we haven't obviously cashed because the board hasn't approved the sale. But it's pretty much in the same terms as anything else we've done with these pieces. And if anybody has any questions, I do my best to answer. And the same as, same as, and I think it finishes out those neighbors that had these parcels on the ITC. Go ahead, Mike.
I see it's three parcels and when I look, it looks as though this, this, this yellow box is technically behind two households. Are you familiar with this transaction? Can you speak to that?
Can you share the map that you're looking at? Because I think the neighbor to the adjacent has already acquired his, his parcels off.
Let me share my screen. This is what I'm looking at right here. Do you see that?
Yeah, there's a teeny tiny overlap, so the neighbor on the other side has already acquired what he could acquire behind him. Now, there's, there's, there is an overlap there for sure, but those are how those parcels are split. Or...
Yeah.
We've had overlaps before, we've, when we've done this.
You remember that? I don't remember if we did or did not.
Yeah, I remember. It never always matches up perfectly.
Thank you. Close, but not exact, the property lines.
Okay.
Any other board questions? Emery, yes?
So the, this will transfer if she sells the property, right? The easement rights will transfer, because I see a lot of people when they extend, they tend to put sheds on there. So they will not be allowed to do that if she sells the property, right?
And I would, what did we say in the agreement? Mike, do you want to pull that out?
Sure, I will share my screen again.
The easement would, okay, yes, we did cover it. So the easement would prohibit any construction or structures over or near the sanitary main. The main purchase agreement will include this condition to grant the sanitary easement. Is where the easement has stated, has stated that she intends to use the space as play area for her grandchildren with zero plans to ever build anything, and that letter of attempt is in my possession, which I think Mike just scrolled past.
It's the same, right? They sold it to someone.
So I'm not gonna build on your dedicated easement space. I'm interested in this great deal. So you can use it for children to play on, grandchildren.
Is, is it, is it, is it legal to build a permanent structure on an easement, on a dedicated easement, or, or no?
And risk of the developer, the, the property owner?
Sorry?
It's at the risk of the, the property owner, the person that builds onto it. If, for example, if you knowingly build into an easement, you can very well lose whatever structure you, you place there. That's actually happened in our community. Nothing, somebody, but it has.
Yes, it has. It, it happens more than you think.
It's painful when, when somebody finds out they did it.
Yeah. Now, somebody could acquire their lot file from a building quite easily and, and see what easements are placed on their property, right? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, and I believe that actually when they, so when we do this transfer, they probably will have a sketch of the property that will actually indicate the easements on it. But yes, they, they should be able to get them.
Okay. There are no other comments or questions. Those, call for roll call.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Wait, Seager's aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Item G nine, consider approval of license agreement for temporary use of Canton property to authorize myself again to sign all documents necessary to complete the agreement with Slow's Barbecue.
As Supervisor, I move that Canton authorize herself, Supervisor Williams, to sign the formal license agreement with Slow's Barbecue and any other document necessary to complete the agreement.
Support.
This is probably the funnest one on our agenda tonight, guys. There's been a lot of conversation with Michael, myself and Diane and leadership team on this one. The clerk's office has received a request in June from Mr. Terry Perone, managing director of Slow's Barbecue, requesting a permit to operate a mobile kitchen food truck in Canton this summer. At this time, Canton does not have a provision to allow trucks specifically, food trucks specifically. But after much discussion with clerk's office, myself, municipal services department has decided the township would allow this as a pilot project, utilizing recent board action approving Canton Business Support Division and determination of the appropriate Canton-owned parcel in Cherry Hill as a possible location. License agreement was drafted by the Corporation Council and that would allow Slow's to operate for an initial period of 30 days only. And what this would do is introduce Cherry Hill Village, the first food truck and with COVID and that people wanted to be outside. It's a nice little addition there that ties into some of the extensions that we, things that we've done for businesses wanting to, creates some outdoor seating and may create an opportunity depending on how Slow's does to put up a facility permanently here in Canton Township, so there's, there's a lot of different moving parts that brought this together that make a lot of sense. I didn't read the background specifically, it's there. If anybody has any questions for myself, Michael, or Jade, that would be the time. That's Jade showing us or Mike showing us where we would put, so it's next to the fountain in Cherry Hill Village.
So I have a question.
Yep.
Um, sounds great. Love the place. They're in Detroit. Is there any public safety issues with, like, are, are we gonna be closing any streets or is there a parking issue or anything like that? Are we just gonna try to use this, like you say, as a pilot to figure those things out?
It's truly a pilot, but it's intended to be more walk to, and then you have parking to the west directly behind it, that is township parking lot. And then directly to the, up there to the, what direction is that? South. Then after that, you're kind of stuck in the mix with the entire Cherry Hill Village not being enough parking.
Yeah.
But then, you know, with the Village Arts Factory, they finished their lot, that's not too far of a walk to the west. So it's, it's a, it's an opportunity here to try to see if we can breathe a little more life into Cherry Hill Village.
Yep, sounds good to me. I told Kristen Thomas that I want my table and chairs I've been asking for, for eight years now, so in Cherry Hill Village. I think it's a good opportunity to see if those will work too.
I'm not sure if Kristen's on the line, but I will pass that message along. Yeah, so then there's the, the walk to, it's kind of central, that fountain to Village Arts Factory, the theater, where, where we set up our farmer's market, a little further walk, but it's a, it's a, it's a test case, and if it's successful, maybe do more with food trucks in the future. Hey? So, Summer?
Um, do we know when they would begin operating and do we place parameters on their hours of operations?
Yes and yes. I believe it was July 21st or 24th. Kristen gave me very specific notes when she was here this afternoon. And I don't know what I've done with those.
I got it for, I got it. So in the agreement itself, it actually spells out the schedule of operations. So Monday, Friday, four to nine, Saturday, 12 to nine, and then Sunday, 12 to six.
Okay, thank you.
And then if somebody has access to a calendar... And then if somebody has access to a calendar, which is a weekend, the 21st or the 24th?
July.
I think it's the 24th.
24th. So it would be then July 24th would be the first day if he's ready to go that he'll be out there.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's just during the weekend is the plan at this point. Over that 30 day period during the weekend.
Thank you. I'm very excited about this.
The 24th of Friday, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a Friday.
So Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yeah, I think that's as far as the weekend. Yes, Michael?
I just want to, you know, one of the things that's been kind of something I've been. Interested in over the last four years is trying to have food truck ordinance, finding a way to do this. That's obviously something that would come before this body. The difference between this and a, and a normal food truck ordinance is that this is not on a public street. This is on township property. So a lot different, but I, I like the idea. Because Cherry Hill Village, you know, the overlay there is, allows for more density. Because it is a livable, walkable area of the township. There are thousands of people who live in that area currently, who. In the past have chosen for meals and entertainment to go outside of the village district. Well, COVID is a, is an interesting opportunity. In that regard, it to, people are staying closer to home. They're staying in their neighborhood. They are looking for opportunities for meals outdoors. I think it's a great opportunity to create some buzz in the Cherry Hill Village District. We've been trying to get that district to take off now for coming up on two decades and. It is, it's there, but it's not completely there yet. So I, I like this. I like Slow's as a, it was, it was, it was a disruptor in Corktown in, in Detroit. It also disrupted the business district on Cass Avenue as well. Both of those communities now are fully thriving, functioning business districts in the city of Detroit when they weren't in the past. So. I think it's, it could get media attention. I think I like the food, to be quite honest. So there's my own selfish individual reason for it. But it also gives people, they can walk down to it, get food. And I imagine when we start doing some, 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 when it's safe and we do some programming, it would be fun to have some, some leisure services programming down there as well so that people. Participate. In this kind of an activity, but also. Enjoy music, neighbors, to really see a village, a true village sprout up in, in Cherry Hill Village. So. I think we've, we've done something tonight that would hopefully help that by supporting the partnership. I, I really like this. I'm very excited. Sorry.
That being said, call for roll call.
Anthony.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagres, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Sinebun.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi. Well, we move into the last item on our formal agenda before we get into the study session for the C I P. And this is almost as scintillating, approve the final invoices for absentee ballots envelope purchase.
Supervisor, I move to approve the final invoices for P S, from PSI for A V envelopes and secrecy sleeves and the new total amount of $11,338.39 opposed to the $10,860 as previously approved.
Support.
Any discussion or questions for?
Mike, how many absentee ballots do we have out?
We currently have out 21,868 ballots, which is a Canton Township record. We are about five to, I think we're about, almost five to 6,000 ahead of where we typically are. For any election.
That's 25% of our voters are basically going absentee.
Yes. Yeah, I would say.
Approaching.
Oh, you've got 72,000 registered voters. So yeah, so 22,072 is going to tell you.
That'd have to be exact.
What? That's 30. That's 30%. So yeah. Never. Ever seen anything like this before.
Remember 12, 13%. Not 30%. So that's crazy. Okay. Any other questions, comments for Clerk Seagres? See none? Call for roll call vote.
Anthony.
Hi.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Seagres, hi. Slavens.
Hi.
Sinebun.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi. Okay, that concludes our normal or. Our normal meeting. Now we're going to segue over into a study session. Would we like to take a five minute break? Cause we've been here for about two hours. And. Or do we want to just keep forging ahead, guys?
Two questions. I, I, I have no problem. Keep going. Do you know how long, I don't know, have any idea of how long a presentation this?
I'm hoping it's 15, 20 minutes and then from there it'll be open to questions.
Okay. Cause I, I actually have a 7:30 event, so I can be a little late for, but that's, so I'd prefer to.
I am happy to fly through my presentation.
Thanks.
Get it down to a few minutes if you want.
Thank you.
Yeah, support.
All right, I'm going to go. Is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen?
Yeah, I'm going to grab another water, but I'll go ahead and start.
Okay. All right.
Can you take it? All right.
You see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So. There it goes. Okay. So the background, I sent, hopefully all of you guys got my email last week and. Got a chance or a couple of weeks ago, maybe. I sent you all a copy of the C I P that was, we went over back in October. So. Just to refresh your memory on that, we had hired O H M some time ago, really as part of the whole stormwater or the, the. The sewer grant that we got, the saw grant that we got, they were doing some work for DPW and as part of that, they also helped. Do an inventory of all of our existing infrastructure to help us kind of get the basis of our capital improvement plan. After they took all that inventory of, of all of our buildings, our team of our staff members actually went through that listing and helped to take a deeper dive into that. And all the infrastructure was prioritized based on a number of criteria, including the age of it and the condition of it. That process took about two years to complete. It was a very labor intensive process to get through there. So as a result of that process, we brought that capital improvement plan to the board in October. And just as a reiteration, all the items on that C I P plan. Were deemed to be critical to the continued operations of our existing facilities. So. The mature, there's a couple tweaks here and there. For example, we talked about the parking lot for the. Out on Cherry Hill Village, that isn't necessarily existing infrastructure. So we added that because we knew that that was a board priority. And I think the target system for the gun range was in there as well. And that was actually already. Approved back in 2019, but it's happening in 2020. So, but the leadership team did do those. We went back that C I P list to see what items have already been completed. And what things could be deferred. Now, the thing is, none of these projects that were in the C I P, we thought could go away completely. Because it's based on our existing infrastructure and our current services continuing to move forward. There are a lot of projects that we needed to do. However, the indoor signage we needed to do because of the 911 phone system and as I think a lot of the board seen, those have already been updated. We. Awarded that project back in 2019, although that was in the C I P for 2020. So we could take that off. Chad was able to identify a target berm extension. Down at the gun range that he thought could, this park could be eliminated. There was also some money allocated in 2021, but he thought the money in 2021 would be enough. To do whatever they needed to do down there. So he was able to eliminate $200,000 out of his capital. The stormwater improvements at Preservation Park have already been completed and the restroom renovations out at Victory Park down at the sports center were also done at the end of 2019. The remainder of the projects. With the exception of Western Wayne, which is listed at the bottom of the chart here, Western Wayne Narcotics, that was a, we are the fiduciary for this group. They, that fiduciary or that group disbanded. So they are now out of that building. So we are looking to actually sell that property. If we. Decide to keep it, these are things that we would have to do. But if we sell it, they're not. So we put that on the deferral list for right now. I think, and I think those totaled about 192,000 in total, if we did end up doing them at a future date. So based on this capital improvement plan, this is what we showed the board as of October for the next three years. Broken down by the different funds and then updated for the deferral. So basically the general fund went from 3.8 million to 2.9 million dollars. But then if you see 2021, it went up from 1 million to 1.7 million dollars. So it was basically just deferring these things from one year to the next because again, these are all assets that were deemed to be. Required to be done. And if you have specific questions on those, the directors who are in charge of those different. Facilities would be able to answer questions. So hopefully you have a copy of that C I P if you did have specific questions. So. After the audit was done, and I thought I included a slide, but I might've hit it. I don't see it. It doesn't look, it looks like it's out of order. The initial. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Hold on, let me back up. All right, this slide is hidden. Let me unhide the slide if I can. And go back to it. All right. I don't know why it's going. It's not going the right way and it's. Let me start over again. This is what you, can you see that now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. This is what was presented with the original C I P. And if you look at this. Really at this bottom corner, at the end of the five years, what we were trying to show is where we thought the fund balance was going to be at the end of five years. And it was 12.27% fund balance for the general fund, which was presented with the original C I P plan. However, after our audit was done this year, our 2019 results actually ended up to be much better. So after our audit, it actually looks like our fund balance at the end of the five years with the same plan that the board has presented. Updated for some of the changes to the C I P, our fund balance is going to, would actually end up at 21%. Fund balance level, keeping the C I P as it was. Now, if we wanted to actually defer the assets as we showed. To do less in 2020 and more in 2021. Our fund balance would be a little bit higher at the end of five years, but that's because the debt issuance would change a little bit. So our debt payments. Would stagger a little bit. So we wouldn't issue as much debt in year one and issue more debt in year two versus a, about five and a half million dollars each year. Cause at the end of the day, we, we still need to get the same amount of projects done. So it delays it a little bit. The fire fund had no changes to their C I P. We do need to kind of get moving as far as issuing debt for them because their fire station is going. And we did project that we were going to issue debt for about two and a half million dollars. But based on the plans that we had for the fire, our fund balance at the end of the five years with these plans would be about 25% fund balance. It's also important to note, if you can see right here, this CARES Act funding that we are going to get from, we should get from the state of Michigan. They are reimbursing communities for April's and May's salaries and fringe benefits for police and fire personnel that worked. So assuming there's enough funding to go around with everybody that applies for that and that application is due this Friday, we would get $800,000 for fire. And 1.2 million dollars for police, assuming there's enough money to go around. Otherwise it would be reduced. On a pro rata share. But with that $800,000, that really helps us out and gets us to a higher fund balance level of 25%. And on the police side issuing that debt, again, the 1.2 million dollars we get from the CARES Act will help offset. Their fund balance as well. And their fund balance at the end would be 15%. So, and that's right in line with what the board recommendation is. So what's next? One of the things that we. One of the things that we have that is not shown in this is. That in 2023, we pay off our last bond payment for the two, initial 2003 debt issue, which we refunded in 2012, we refinanced in 2012. That frees up about $2 million annually. So when you look at those projections. Where it looks like we're in the hole each year, that includes $2 million that we have to pay off on our debt. So that's actually going to free up some money in 2024. We'd like to answer any board specific questions on the C I P. But then we also would like to begin the process of issuing debt based on the board's comfort level. So based on what's in the C I P, if we were to do. No deferrals, I'd be requesting that we issue debt of 9.2 million dollars. In 9.2 million dollars, or if we wanted to defer, it'd be about 8 million dollars. Again, this is just trying to get a sense from the board to start the process. The. Formal R B A and request would still come before the board. But before doing that, we wanted to show you this and get your thoughts on where we stood. And if there's specific questions on any of the C I P, the other directors are on the, on the line as well and can, I'm sure would be happy to answer them.
A question I have, Wendy, is the sinkhole out at. Independent, that's a brand new problem that came out of no place. It's about. I've, I've seen numbers, 700,000 already, but could approach a million dollars. That's not addressed anyplace in current budget or. The C I P plan, correct?
Correct. That would come out of the water and sewer fund.
Right.
It is not included in there. We're currently looking in to see if any, a portion of that is covered by insurance. We think it should be a portion of it. We're just not sure how much of it would be. So we're still, we're still looking into that.
All right. And I know Jade was looking at root cause, trying to look at root cause with the engineering firm. And there may be some other avenue there too.
That wouldn't impact these numbers that we talked about.
Got it. Got it. It's water and sewer fund alone.
Correct. Would it be helpful to close this so you can see everybody? I can always share.
Yeah, that way I can see hands raised right now.
Yeah, I had a question, Pat.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Was the police station remodels a part of the C I P or was that a separate entity?
The chair still there?
I'm here. I'm here.
Yeah. So you've got it funds in the footage for C I P for remodeling?
Not a, I don't know if. We're talking about a full remodel or. We're talking about just cleaning up what we have and that's included, the cleaning up being. Cleaning up what we have in the building. I don't think it'd be necessary to do that free, full remodel as proposed at some point in the last year.
There are items such as the, like some of the bathroom remodels. There are some items, it's just. It would be improving the existing infrastructure, not the complete remodel. Part of the police stuff that was. Taken out, which I didn't speak to, we were deferring a portion of it and reduce the cost is the paving of the back parking lot is moved to 2021 and. Chad is currently working through the security enhancements needed for that back parking lot. He didn't think the security that was, that was going to need to be done was going to cost quite as much or be quite of it. Quite as expansive as it originally was thought to be. So he thought that cost could be reduced by about half.
So was what we discussed though originally all part of the C I P or was that a separate thing?
That would be separate. What we're talking about is improving the infrastructure as we see it now. Now with the safety enhancements, what we're talking about is deferring some of that cost. Is because the, what is critical to the police department right now is the security of the generator and the tower. That would be. More economical than a full. The approach we would take is to secure that, not a full parking lot at this point. Knowing in the future, there probably be funds coming to the police department through other means and not to the taxpayer. But we would have to secure that part of the actual generator and the tower immediately. Not the full parking lot as a critical function.
Okay. Well, I guess what my comments would be that Wendy, if you think there is a benefit for us to defer these, these things for one year, I mean, we've waited on some of them. For a while, so I'm fine with it. But if, I mean, I, I, I thought from the presentation or discussion that we had last time that we weren't in such a terrible financial position right now because of these things. I'm not. I'm not against moving forward on them if we think we have the money to do so. I'm not sure if that's what you guys were looking for in terms of comments, but.
Yeah, yeah, that, we were just looking for some general board direction. I, I, you know, halfway through 2020. So when I say. You know, we're going to do these projects in 2020. So when I say, you know, we're going to do these projects in 2020, a good chunk of these are not going to wrap up until 2021. And then when I say 2021, a good chunk of those are probably going to get pushed off to 2022 as well. You know, obviously, the last six months has not exactly been what we thought the last six months was gonna, was gonna be. But these are critical assets and items that do need to get replaced and renovated. And the longer we hold off, the more expensive it's likely going to be to fix these. And we're going to have to do some maintenance just to maintain it and then have large, you know, large outflows of money again. So if the board's comfortable, because the, you know, we went through a two-year extensive process to go through this, I, I would like to proceed with the first round of it anyways, and we're going to have a better idea what happens. Again, if you recall, when we, when we brought the bond issue to the board, it was a series. So it wasn't a, we have to issue all the debt upfront. So we can say we're going to do this one this year, and then if in a year we decide, you know, we need to back off, so we're really going to need to, you know, reel in some of the capital, we can change that again in a year before we issue the next round. And the debt would be issued in such a way that it's flexible on, that we can do projects within the CIP plan with that dollar. So if we decide, you know, we issue this nine million dollars of, of debt, and we say, you know what? We really gotta, we really gotta move up that security for the parking lot, the security for the tower and the generator over public safety. We can do that and swap out something we were going to do for the general fund. We have, we have that flexibility. We'll just have to make sure we charge the debt to the correct fund in the correct year.
Amberie, please unmute.
Thanks. Do we, what is a contingency on the fire station? I mean, we always know contracts over run, when they find things or they have to add more. We had like ten percent on to that one in the total when we were budgeting. Do you know?
Chris, do you know the answer to that question?
Yeah, I think we're actually a little bit closer to fifteen percent on that, to be honest.
Okay, so Wendy, you're saying, so basically, you're thinking even with the revenue shortfall, we're going to see, we're still going to be okay with these bonds?
I do. I think the fact that in 2024, we've got two million dollars of our bonds that are going to be off of our books. I also know that we have a census coming up here. Our revenue sharing will be adjusted based on that census, so while our revenue sharing's going down, it likely will get about a ten percent bump based on our population growth. So I'm hoping that in 2021, our revenue sharing is pretty at least neutral to where it has been. If it's not back to where, you know, back to where it was and even higher. I, I think at this point in time, you know, there's critical needs to our existing infrastructure. So we have to, we have to do some of this work, or it's just going to crumble, and it's going to be more costly. So I think we have the means to, I'm not suggesting we issue, you know, ten million dollars just for the general fund alone this year. I'm suggesting we do, you know, kind of break it up in pieces. We don't really know what's going to happen yet for property tax values, if property tax values decline, you know, which we'll know more in December, what it looks like for our revenue for 2022. You know, we'll have time to react at that point in time in this December for any future debt issuances, if it looks like our, the property values are going down for 2022. And we'll have a better outlook on revenue sharing as well at that point.
With the rates right now.
Are short of, short of, you know, closing buildings and eliminating services, these are needs that we have to our existing infrastructure.
What rates are you looking at for the bonds right now?
I, I estimated four percent in here. That's high. I, based on where current rates are, I think it'll probably be three percent would be my guess. I did four percent to be conservative.
So there could be a savings there then.
Yeah. I was trying to be conservative. I think, I think the board probably knows I tend to be a little conservative when I do these, when I do my predictions anyways. But I did four percent just to give myself a little bit of cushion, just in case, because you never know what it's actually going to end up selling for.
No, I agree. We need to, we can't let the infrastructure crumble. So anyway, you can keep it up. That's a good idea. Thank you.
I'm getting a sense, Wendy, go ahead and put the, the RBA together to bring back to front of the board as quickly as we can with the, not deferring.
Sounds great.
If that's wrong, guys, let me know. Very good. All right, that covers what was absolutely critical that we covered tonight for the CIP plan. That concludes our formal agenda. Mike, do we have any raised hands from the public out there? Any public comment at this time?
See none.
All right, any additional board comments? I guess staff first, any comment? Greg, go ahead. Amu, Greg?
Yeah, just, we started the farmer's market last weekend. I, we had good participation. And Channel Seven has reached out to us and requested to do live remotes from the farmer's market this weekend. So you can see that on Channel Seven. Unfortunately, the actual live remotes all happened prior to the market opening. That'll be happening, I think it's at six, a half hour, starting at six AM up to eight thirty AM. They'll be doing live remotes out there.
Chris? I was just gonna say, on behalf of Public Safety, thank you again for your support for Public Safety and what you did tonight. That was unexpected, but anyways, I know that they'll appreciate that as well. So thank you for the support. Go ahead, Michael.
Just so, just an update, the Election Commission authorized representatives met yesterday, went over the testing through our public accuracy test for, a test for all the precincts and all of the high-speed tabulators. Everything performed correctly. The programming is set. It has been tested. It is now sealed and locked, and will be ready for Election Day. We, as I said earlier, have been issuing a substantial amount of ballots. We've actually acquired additional ballots for eight precincts because we're just auditing how many we've issued. We've already issued more ballots than we had voters in the 2018 primary. And the 2018 primary was a record primary. We saw more, we had, I believe, fifty years in a primary, if not in, in reported history. So we are set, and we are staying on top of things. We are just receiving ballots as they come back. We've got a substantial amount still out. Received about four thousand back in officially. So just, we're getting ready for election net with facilities. Today, we'll be meeting with EP shortly on ways to ensure all of our precincts are set up for, to promote public health. We are going to be working with the CEZ guidelines, the Bureau of Elections guidelines, and make sure we can provide a safe voting experience for individuals who choose to vote on the election.
Hi, Anne.
I just wanted to let people know that the Township Hall is open Tuesday through Thursday from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon. Water billing and the Treasury is open a lot at the clerk's office. And if you want to talk to a building, you can come in and request that. Phones, or answering phones Monday through Friday, but if you want to come in and pay your taxes or water bill or bring your ballot in or whatever, Tuesday through Thursday, nine to three is when residents can come in. We are screening them, and they do need to wear a mask. So that's our important issues. Thank you.
No other board comments. Steve, you got seven minutes to pick your meeting. Amberie, go ahead.
Yeah, just one quick question. So I mean, August first is coming upon us fast, and July fourteenth. And that was our planned opening for some of our facilities down at the park. What is the status of that now that we've gone to full masks in public places? You know, so is there any changes? Has, what does the leadership team met on?
That all will be under Greg Hollenberger with Leisure Services and Sports Center. We'll have its first event, which is a tournament, starting July thirty-first. We've actually expanded it to the Friday to spread the games and the people out further, and it's all outdoors. But we have nothing indoors still, so there's no changes to what's been discussed by the board other than the governor's orders. We're, we're still operating under that, which is, you know, no more than ten people inside the facility, Sports Center, and then the, the outdoor stuffs that go. We have not opened up our splash pad. There's been a lot of residents pressing to do that. Westland has, Van Buren has, Limit Township has not, like ourselves, because of difficulty monitoring or controlling. So there's no real change other than around for the Sports Center first.
Oh, with the Sports Center in the audience, I mean, because now they all have to wear masks. Is that correct? How would we, how do we plan to enforce that?
Oh, the mask requirement is for inside, or if they're, they can't be social distance for six feet. So we'll be enforcing the social distancing, and we're going to be monitoring the counts for in and out, just like we are for the farmer's market. We have a count for people coming in and out, so that we don't have a gathering too large over a hundred.
Okay, because it was outdoors, it's over so many people, correct, also?
Correct. One hundred for the outdoor event, so we will be monitoring that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see no further comments from board or staff. That concludes our formal agenda. Call for motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Again?
Call for roll call vote.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seegerstein. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Hi. That concludes our meeting this evening. Everybody, please be safe.
Stay well, everyone.
Bye-bye. Good night.